Okay, it is seven o'clock. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
At this point, we ask if there's anyone recording, just to let us know here. Okay. Okay, we're going to open the continuation of the, from last week, of the Patel hearing on Southbridge, Patel on Southbridge, Mass. And this will be for 143 Oxford Street North. Is there a motion to reopen that hearing?
Motion?
Second.
Second, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yes, you are.
Come on up. The microphone is over at that podium there. At this point, you can, if you have any more information that we needed for, from the last hearing?
Sure, well, I understand that there is a petition for relief from the parking requirement.
That we can't hear until 7:15?
Okay. Would it make sense that, that we hear the main petition after that, because obviously that will impact the--
Well, I mean, if, in the meantime, we have someone that probably could shed us a little more light on the, on that property in the front, if you'd like to hear about it, and I think the board would like to hear from him.
Yes.
To get more information. Mr. Ethia, if you're here, if you can give us some, some little background on that parcel.
Okay. Good evening, my name's Ken Ethia. Guess I call myself the official unofficial town historian. I watched the meeting a couple weeks ago, and a lot of the information I heard about the Main Street didn't, didn't really add up to me. I dug out some maps, fact that you've got one of my maps, but I've probably got something here that's a little bit more clear as to what, what actually that site was and what that part of town was. Back years ago, Stoneville was almost a separate town. The best way I could probably explain it, my family's been in town for many, many years. When my great-grandfather, Edward LaPrad, died in 1909, it was the telegram and gazette as his obituary, actually never mentioned Auburn at all, said native of Stoneville. Stoneville was very much its own little, almost its own little town, not, not officially, but that all came about in 1839 when Jeremy Stone built a water-powered, well, first off, he manufactured cotton goods. I've got, I've got pictures of the mill here, I don't know how much detail you actually would like. I've also got, would tell you a little bit about Main Street, I guess. Main Street actually was the main street in Stoneville. It was the first street in Auburn to be paved, was the first street to have streetlights, electric streetlights. So, when I heard this gentleman that was here the last meeting saying that it was more or less a cow path, it, it just didn't make a whole bunch of any sense to me. It actually would have come out almost across from, pretty much across from where Rochdale Street comes out today, on Oxford Street, and I have the maps here to back it up. They also wanted to know about the canal that was there. The canal, Jeremy Stone's mill was water-powered. The ruins are still at the base of what's Main Street today, and there was a reservoir, either called Mill Pond or Smith's Reservoir, Smith was one of the owners of the mill. And that water would actually come from lower Stoneville Reservoir. You can still see, I believe, at the end of Rochdale Street where it came underneath the street and would cross near where Mr. Cudere's building is there, go down through there. And in 1971, when the sewers came through, they didn't, they made it so the water would no longer go there, and what it ended up doing was making the Mill Pond stagnant, and eventually it was actually filled in because there was so many mosquitoes in there, from the way I understand it. The other thing that, and anybody's welcome to see these maps, I've got a pile of them here. The other thing that I don't think was brought up at all was in the year 1902, was to the Southbridge Street Railway. Before that, there was no Pinehurst Ave, that was the bed of the railway. And with trolley cars, they didn't really like to go up hills. They didn't, they didn't function well, they didn't have traction. So what was done there was, right about, and Mr. Cudere would probably have more of his memory exactly where it went through, it's a little bit before my time. I know, I know that Paul lived, well, my family lived right next door to Paul, so I know where his house was as a child. But the street railway, our trolley line, would cross over and go almost through that area there. There was a trussel where it would, again, parallel Main Street, coming out today at what is Prospect Park, and then it went up Bryn Mawr Avenue that way. But that is clearly shown on one of the 1904 map I have. Again, you're more than welcome to look at these maps. And I know, a few years back, where the store was at the top of Malvin Road, it's, it's now leveled, but when they changed ownership of that store, I get several phone calls regarding the trolley line that went through there. And I know that they had a very hard time selling this land. That would have been the Worcester to Webster Street Railway, and there were a lot of restrictions. I don't even know whether or not anybody's looked into this with, with the trolley line that went through there. The other thing that I heard that night was that if the parking was not available, they would just lob a few trees down. And, and we have a conservation commission, in my opinion, is second to none, they're really well, well-informed in what goes on. And I don't claim to know about that, but I know enough that Kettlebrook goes right next to there. It's the largest single tributary to the Blackstone River, and I think it would be very difficult to just start knocking trees down without going in front of the conservation. So that's another consideration that, that I think should be, should be looked into before anything goes on there. I used to get my hair cut at Al's, and they, they do a nice job there. They were so busy that you'd, you'd have to wait so long, that's why I stopped, stopped going there. But I guess I would have a little bit of firsthand information there. I've seen three barbers there with three people in the chairs, and I think there were seven or eight chairs for waiting people, and I've seen them all filled, and it's, it's a very busy place. You can do the math there and figure out how many cars that would be. Now, I remember when that building was put up, fellow named Burkhardt, I think his first name was Bob, but I could be wrong. It was bay state glass, and it was not something that would really need a, he did have the apartments upstairs, but it wouldn't need a lot of parking to be a, the business that was in there. And I've, I'd live only a couple miles from there, and I've seen the, how much it's grown, the different businesses being, being in there. And I, I personally can't see how they could actually support any more cars being in their parking lot. I, I believe Main Street, again, I'm going to probably tell you, Mr. Cudere would know a lot more than I would, but I think, I think that the, right away from Main Street, I think it's on the Kettlebrook side, and I think you couldn't, I couldn't imagine that you could put any parking in there. I, oh, and if I don't tell you this, I'll be in hot water when I get home. My wife went by at 1:15 today, which would be a fairly, I would think, a low, not many, not many cars at that time of day were there, but she said there were seven cars at 1:15 today. That would, I assume, be the barber shop and the, the apartments. That's, that's about what I have to say, and I'll bring these maps up, and if, again, if the people, the owners wanted to see the, look at the maps--
Yeah, I'd like to see the maps if I could.
Sure. Is there any, are there any questions or comments before I--
No, I just want to kind of see where the, where the Main Street, I saw the one map with the trolley car.
Okay, well, this, this is probably a little bit more blown up, so you could--
Okay.
Yeah, Ken, I'd like to say too, thanks for the, let me borrow that map.
Yeah, thank you very much for giving us your--
Thank you for letting us talk.
--information here. Does anybody want, you guys want to, you know, see this? Bob, or come on in. We can look at this one, we'll pass it around. And, Bob, you want to see that?
Yes, please.
I'm sure we can get copies, or have copies made for this.
I, I don't need that back tonight, you're welcome to take it and give it to me in a week or so, if you want to do whatever you need to do with it.
Okay, maybe we'll make some copies, whoever needs them. I mean, when you're done, you need to just pass it over so they can look at it. When you're done, just pass it over so the attorneys can look at it.
Do you like these? Yeah.
And we can get your copies, if you need copies. Well, as far as the first application goes, on the changing of the non-conforming use, we can probably wait to--
Not sure if we can have two, can we have two open hearings?
Well, if we're not going to take, if we're not going to take any more information, we can close the hearing.
Yeah.
And we can always decide later, so that we've always, you know, at times, we've done the decisions at the end of the meeting. I don't know if you're going to, if you want to give us some more info?
Absolutely.
Oh, absolutely, okay.
Yes.
Now, this is not going to be on the parking application. That's a separate hearing after this one, unfortunately. Okay. I mean, we're not going to be hearing anything on the relief from the parking regulations at this point, because that was, that was posted as a separate hearing at a separate time. So this, this, that meeting hasn't been opened yet. What's, what's opened here is the 8.2.2.
Which is just the change of use from the catering and takeout food to the convenience store?
Correct. And that, that is open right now. The one for the parking is not open yet.
So, in terms, so we should save, in terms of the issues related to parking, should be saved for the--
I would save that for--
And this would then would just be in terms of--
Yeah, anything more on the change of use, I guess, we can, we can discuss here, or if, even if you had anything more on, which has a bearing on, on the ownership of the property, we could, we can talk about.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm wondering what the historical background has to do with the food service that was, that was approved by this board in 2001, which is now being changed to the convenience store. What does the historical significance have to do with that?
Well, it proves ownership, I mean, it could, it could have been done in 2001, could have been an error.
No, no, but what ownership are we talking about?
It's ownership of that part where it says unknown owner.
Okay, so, so we can talk about the ownership of that parcel, not the fact that there's parking on it, but just about the ownership of the parcel, because we do have information on that.
We could talk about that parcel that's in question.
Yes. Yeah, and we have information on that.
Okay.
Okay. You know, it's, we did, I did have some additional title work done, and the indications that we have is that the property was last owned of record by the Worcester Carpet Company. Worcester Carpet Company was formed in 1870 as the Crompton Carpet Company, changed its name in 1879 to the Worcester Carpet Company, and ran out of business in 1902. That's from the Historical Society in the City of Worcester. So, of record, it would appear, then, that they are the last record title holder to that parcel. And without, based on what we know today, then I would assume that the interest, whatever interest the carpet company had that went out of business 111 years ago, would have passed to the owners of the company, shareholders or owners of the company at that time. They're obviously long gone, and it would have been probably broken up into multiple small portions, but this land, it's only a little over a thousand square feet, so it's not a parcel which really would have had any significance to anybody in terms of, you know, placing any value on it, particularly in 1902. But the indications are, we did check Mr. Cudere's deeds, ran his title back to 1913, and we do have the deeds, I have copies of his deeds, chain of title going back to 1913, and his property, all the descriptions that are contained, clearly state that it is bounded on the north by the canal. And I do have a plan from Reenie Brothers from 1971, which locates the canal, locates the building, locates Main Street, and also shows the trolley track that basically used to run through the property. All of those are shown on this plan, and you can look with the chain of title that goes with it, and you can clearly see that Mr. Cudere's property went up to the edge of the canal and never went into this area in question. So, the indication again is that it's the Worcester Carpet Company, it's been out of business for 111 years. That would be the last record title holder to the property. I do have, that I can, would like to submit, is the additional title work, and also with that, a copy of, of plans that I think could probably be more helpful than what you received previously, because it actually shows the building, shows Main Street, shows the canal, and they're all depicted on this, on this plan. Also have a plan of record from 1936, which shows Main Street, shows the trolley track, shows the canal. These are all clearly shown, and we're right, basically, in the epicenter of all of those. The road, the canal, the trolley, basically, all run through this parcel. But I do have the plans, and I think it's, I think it would be helpful.
Sure.
If I could submit those.
Can I only get one set of the title work?
Okay.
But there are multiple copies of that, which--
All right. I don't want to leave you out there.
I did highlight the northerly boundary of the Cudere parcel on those copies, and if you look at the title work that I have, the, look at any of the legal descriptions, it will clearly indicate that property is bounded on the north by the canal. And the canal, basically, what was the canal and was subsequently filled in, runs between his property in this triangular piece.
I'm assuming that original building that's on this one is, was, was demolished? Because it's not--
No, I think that's the same building. There's, I think it was, what I understood was the building was built in the early 70s.
Situated differently on the lot between the two--
Well, I think it was enlarged a couple--
Quite a bit different on the--
Looking at the various approvals from the town that I had seen, I know that there were a couple of cases where there were additions. I don't know, I don't know positively, but I understood that, basically, that the building from my client was, was built in the early 1970s. That date is 1971. And so I assume that that was the building that maybe was added on to. The shape appears to be, if you look at the, one of the 2001 plan, it looks like, it looks to me, anyway, like it had been enlarged at some point from 71 forward. But I, I do know that Mr. Cudere's was, he's been there since, I believe, since 1955, so he would certainly know if there was a building there before the building was, you know, whether the building there now is, whether it was something which preceded, you know, was there before.
Mr. Cudere, do you, do you remember if there was an addition to the building?
Okay. It was added on to three times, so I think that that's, basically, that's, that's the building that's been enlarged on since then. One of the things Mr. Cudere just said, and he had said at the last meeting too, which I don't understand, because he said he used to own that property, and if you look at the property, we traced the title back to 1946, I believe, forward, and I have a chain of title with the names of all of the owners and the various deeds in between, and he's not listed as one of the owners.
I bought it from Arthur Blaze, and I gave Burkhardt, before we made the transfer, I sold it there.
If you look, our deed starts with Mr. Blaze, the chain of title.
Burkhardt bought it from Blaze. When did you purchase it?
I, I bought, and I bought the whole parcel with, with Mr. Blaze, and I bought Burkhardt with a friend of mine, so I said, instead of being transferred, I just go buy it from Blaze, and I looked at my options.
If you look at the deeds, there's a deed from 1946, Worcester Street Railway Company to Arthur Blaze, and then there's a deed from Arthur Blaze to Robert Burkhardt dated August 11, 1969, and then it goes from Mr. Burkhardt to, he deeded it to Perloff Developers, which later changed its name to Loftus Appraisal Services. Then it goes from Loftus to Charbonneau, and Charbonneau to O'Leary, to Fisher, and down on the line. I don't see Mr. Cudere's name in there anywhere.
But what, even-- I'm just going to make it through, through the chair, but even irregardless of, of whether he had claim to that now, I mean, there is still, on any of these, does it reference that section we're looking for?
Yes, it does.
Which one does that, which deed? And why, you know, I just don't understand, then, why this assessment says owner unknown?
No, no, this, this references--
The other part of the property, not, not the one, not the section we have a problem with where we, we don't know who owns it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
However, I, I do think Mr. Cudere is stating that he used to own the property, he used to own our property.
Right.
And we're relying upon him for, for statements and representations as to where his property line is and what was there, and he's saying that he used to own our property, and he never did. So, I just want you to keep that, take that into consideration. He's not in the chain of title. He said, he's made that representation, but the title goes from 1946 to 1969 to 1985. I have all of the deeds, they're all listed, his name is not in there. Now, he's, his daughter has just said, or he has just said, well, he wasn't, you know, he wasn't on paper. So if you weren't on paper, then you weren't an owner, and I don't know what your interest would be, but the record owners to our tract of land, which he had said several times now he owned, he never did.
Okay. I mean, clearly, you own a tract of land here, and that's, I think it's not in dispute from, from day one, but the only problem we've been having is the owner unknown part, which almost seems to be Main Street. If this is the front of the building, Main Street comes through the front of the building.
Well, Main, yeah, Main Street and the canal.
Main, yeah.
Main Street and quite a bit of, the canal goes straight down through, also runs straight through as well. And if you look at the, look at the old plans, the canal used to run, if you look at the second plan, I believe you can see the, the canal as well, also goes right out to Oxford Street. And that, the canal does seem to encompass, actually, more of that triangle than Main Street. And if you also look, Main Street actually runs right through, directly through the middle of our building. So Main Street was clearly was discontinued, it was a private street. When private streets are discontinued, title passes to the abutters on either side. That is, you know, we've got a building now that sits right in the middle of what used to be Main Street. So this, this is a further--
Well, Main Street also crossed Oxford Street, so somewhere there, there's still a street that's owned by the town. Where the town ever gave up ownership of Main Street, I don't know.
Well, we have a building that's been situated on it, and we've got--
No, I understand that--
Going back to 1946, they've been passing title to the property.
But for some reason, even in the, in the, in the newest survey here, it shows the line where your property ends, and unknown. And I think unknown is right where Main Street goes through.
Well, no, if, if you look at the 71 plan, it shows you the same triangle, and it actually does show Main, you're, you're correct, it shows Main Street going out to Oxford Street.
Right.
But it also shows Main Street extending backward, right through the middle of our building.
Correct.
And extending up.
But where the street ends, I mean, was, was not really determined, I guess. I don't know if you have it in, in where the street was saying, okay, this is a private street, it's, it's now been not a private street, it's going to revert back to whatever owner. Okay? Because Oxford Street is still on here, and it's still here, so--
No, but if you, I don't know, are you saying that you think that little piece of Main Street is still there, and that it was only dis, that about 98% of the street was discontinued?
No, no, I'm saying if it wasn't to an owner, if it was an actual street, it belongs to the town.
No, it doesn't.
And why would it belong to the town?
I'm sorry. It would only own to, only, it would only belong to the town if it was a decreed way. Private streets--
But if, if it was a town, if it was a street in the town? I mean, the town doesn't have to decree its own streets.
Yes, they do, in order to have ownership. All they have is an easement on the property. For private street, there's an easement only.
But when was it, is this is a private street?
With all due respect, Main Street, we have a building which goes right through it. It extends all the way back, if you look on the plan, there are probably 50, 60, 70 houses, if you run back from that, that Main Street runs through. So I don't think there's anything really significant about the last 10 feet of it somehow being retained by the town, and everything else was abandoned and given up, and there's no, you know, are, are-- And there's no, you know, are, are all those people that extend back for the full length of Main Street, are you suggesting they don't have title to their property?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm saying they have a title, and it shows on the, I'm sure the total that they own it. You have a piece of property that says you don't own it.
Oh, I, I agree.
That's what I'm trying to understand.
No, 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 no.
There are people that-
I agree that-
And they own it, and it's clear title that they do own it. You don't have that for this parcel.
Right. I absolutely agree.
Okay.
No dispute that a portion of what used to be Main Street runs through that 1,000 square foot triangle. Also, the canal also runs through that as well. And they're shown on the 1971 plan. So, but I think in terms of the suggestion that maybe Main Street wasn't discontinued, or that the town somehow owns that land, don't own anything else that everyone else has built on, on what used to be Main Street, but somehow they've retained ownership of that last 10 feet.
No, I'm thinking that it possibly could have become part of Oxford Street.
I, I don't, you know, I think when you look at a butters, normally you look on, you don't look, you look on either side, you don't look at the terminus, is basically the way that that would, would look. But, you know, the ownership, as I say, we have, if you look at our deed description, it makes reference to, to that land that we're talking about, being owned by the Worcester Carpet Company. And I believe it's listed as owner unknown. I believe it's listed as owner unknown because the Worcester Carpet Company went out of business 111 years ago. And when you go out of business, then if you're a company, whatever interest would have been owned by the business would have passed to the, the owners of the business, the shareholders of the business. Could be thousands of people. They don't know who these thousands of people are. So that would be owner unknown. But if you look in the, in the chain of title that we have, it doesn't say by the town of Oxford, doesn't say by, doesn't say by Oxford Street. Our deed, if you look at our deed, actually says 80 feet by Oxford Street. Oxford Street is referenced. And then the next abutter is not the town of Auburn, it's not Oxford Street, it's not Mr. Kaderi, it's the Worcester Carpet Company. So the owner unknown part, I think the unknown element there is the fact that the company's been out of business for 111 years. And there's no way of knowing who all of those shareholders were 111 years ago, how many children they've had, how many, you know, generations it's passed through in terms of who the ownership might be. I mean, that gives you, that, that's the unknown element that you're dealing with there. Typically, when you have that type of a situation, because it's really impossible to, to determine who owned shares in the company when it went out of business, usually, if, if you're trying to locate somebody like that for, you know, court purposes, they would say, you know, you would, you would publish in the newspaper, you know, for anyone who had an interest in the Worcester Carpet Company, and, you know, be, in lieu of anything else, because basically there's, there's no way to identify these people or determine who they are. The other thing that we just want to follow up again with a little bit on, is, you know, if you look at that plan from 1971, which I believe is right about the time this building was built, it's my understanding, basically, the parking areas that were, are located within that triangle, you know, have been there since that time. That is 42 years. The period of time required to establish adverse possession is 20 years. So we're looking at double what the law requires basically you to establish, you know, in terms of adverse possession. And we're also looking at, I think, based on what we've discovered, you know, the, the last owner, basically of record, going out of business in 1902. So-
Let me ask you a question, and I'm, I'm trying to go back into my old real estate law myself. Do you, have you heard of the, the term is cheat?
To the state?
Yeah.
I, I don't think any, I don't think land is cheats to the state.
Well, when land, if, if, say, if you hold property and you have no heirs, doesn't that, that's as cheap, it goes back to the state, correct? I mean, there's only, there's only certain powers the state has.
Well, typically, they talk about-
And that's one of them.
I, I, I've, to be honest with you, I've never, and I would, I could ask my fellow counsel, that generally applies to personal property? I've never heard of that, I've never heard that applying to land.
It's only personal? I'm not too sure, because you wouldn't, because it comes back to governmental powers over land, which is taxation, eminent domain, zoning, police powers, and it's cheat. Those are the four powers that government has over property. At least from my studies, which was, been 20 years ago, but unless they've changed that. It's four powers of government over property, and it's, and it's, and it's not, I don't think, personal property, it's, it's land. It's, it goes under the bundle of rights of land of ownership.
With all due respect again, I've been a lawyer for 35 years. I went to law school. I don't, we never talked about that, I, I've never heard of that before.
Really, it's, it's one of the basic courses of, of when you, when you're appraising-
That land, land goes back to the, to the, to the state?
There's no known, there's no known owners.
Normally, what would, normally what would happen is if there's no, if, is tax bills don't get paid. And when tax bills don't get paid, you know, the town or other, you know, would take the property for non-payment of taxes. I've never had, heard of a situation, clearly, the town has listed this property for the last 40 years on your assessor's records as owner unknown. I would assume if the town thought that this land belonged to them, and it had, is cheated to the town, why would they continue to do that? So I, I-
Well, no one's paid taxes on it.
Oh, but you're, you're saying it wouldn't matter, that would just go to the town because no one's around?
If there's no known, I mean, if there's no known owner, no relatives, I think that's what happens to the property. I mean, it just doesn't sit there, no one pays it and says, when people say, I, I want it now, it goes, it reverses back to town.
I'll tell you what my experience has been. In this day and age, there are very few parcels of land that, that come up owner unknown. Almost everyone knows, part of its record keeping.
Yeah, this is the first we've come across.
But, but years ago, I mean, I know I did have some, did some work in Douglas, and not, not to pick on Douglas, but they had really bad records. And they had in their town, you could go in the assessor's office, and there were, there were 15, 20, 30 different parcels in town that they didn't know who the owner was. And a lot of it was what they call stump, stumpage land, where its only value had been for the wood that was on it. Someone would buy it, they'd cut the wood off it, and they'd just leave it, they'd abandon it. And they did have, you know, they didn't have computerized records, you know, all of the deeds and everything were written by hand, and they actually carried forward these parcels as owner unknown. So it's a little bit unusual, but I, I have to say that I don't think the, you know, the as cheat argument, I don't really see that that would be applicable, and I don't know that it would be up really for the, for the Board of Appeals to make a claim for the town of Auburn on this piece of property.
I'm not making a claim, but then again-
We know who the owner is.
Right now, we, we know, we don't know who owns it.
We own, we know who owned it.
We don't own it.
We know who owned it.
Right now, we're, we're in limbo on it.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, but we do know, we do know the last record, which is a Worcester Carpet Company. They were the last record owner. We know that.
Okay.
It's in, if you look at our deeds, you will see that. In every deed that's there, it refers to that triangular piece as by the carpet, Worcester Carpet Company. So maybe this, if this plan said owner unknown, formerly owned by the Worcester, now or formerly of the Worcester Carpet Company, that would be a little bit more accurate, because that, you know, that is the determination.
Okay, but, okay, so we got that settled. It's owned by the Worcester, or was owned.
Right.
At this point, it's not owned by your client?
Yes, it is. We've been using it for 42 years, we've established title by adverse possession.
Has, has that been done in a court?
It doesn't need to be. It has not, but it does, I, we don't have record title, we have adverse possession, we have title to the property, double what's required.
Required to be for a finding by a court?
No, required by law. All the court is doing is confirming your title.
Doesn't the court have to say, give you that title? Doesn't, so-
Well, I, I agree.
Explain it to me.
And correct me if I'm wrong, it's similar to when one spouse dies, all of the deceased spouse's property goes to the living spouse.
Right.
You don't have to go to court to make that happen. By operation of law, which is what we're talking about here, living spouse now owns all the deceased spouse's property. So I don't, I, I agree with the adverse possession.
Hey, I'm not too sure how the spouses come in with this, with, if there's one owner and another owner.
Because, because what we're, you're asking them, I, I think what you're saying is that unless a court puts their stamp on this parcel of land as belonging to the rest of it-
To them, yeah.
And I'm, I'm agreeing with the counsel that it doesn't have to. Adverse possession doesn't work that way. Just like when one spouse dies, the living spouse doesn't have to go to court and say, hey, court, you know, put your stamp on the fact that I now own my deceased spouse's things. It just happens.
Okay.
If my wife dies, I own what she owns. And if this land has been used for 20 years continuously with no objection from anybody else, by operation of law, it is now part of the larger parcel.
And no transfer of, of that title has, could go, has to be done?
No.
So, in essence, they owe the town taxes for the last 40 years?
Don't know about that.
No, that, oh, so they only get the good part, not the bad.
No, 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 I, I could answer that. I actually know the answer to that.
Okay, what's the answer to that?
Yeah, yeah. The answer is that the town has to, if the town doesn't send out a tax, you can't pay a tax bill that you don't get. And there's a three-year period where actually the town can go back in this type of a situation and, you know, make a corrective issuance for, for tax bills. I believe it's, it's limited to three years. Because that's why I want to make sense, that we're gonna go back to taxes to, you know, 1946. Because if you, after that period, once, if the town doesn't send out a bill, they couldn't, they couldn't not bill, let's just say they don't send you a bill on your house, and then 15 years later say, you know, we forgot, we never sent you a bill, we want you to pay for the last 15 years. They actually have to send out a bill. And I believe the answer is that they can go back for a couple of years, but I believe it's only three years.
Let me just ask you one question on the spousal thing. Suppose I got married three times, because it's been several owners of that property, and the current owner has only owned it for four years. Does he get retro back 20, 40 years? Is, he's only owned it for 2006?
Yeah, I, I have with me, I brought them last time, and I can be happy to give them to you again. There are two, there's, there's case law on this. This is not, believe me, this, this has come up before. And it's very clear, there are cases from the court that state, and these, these are well-established cases, they're very old cases, you know, that go back and say that adverse possession gives you title. It doesn't give you record title, it gives, but it does give you title. You do have title to the property, which is what we've been saying. It also says, there's a separate case, which you're allowed, when you purchase property, to what they call tack on to previous owners. So in an adverse possession case, it's not like each person has to have 20 years. If you have, people are using the property, they use it for 10 years, you buy it from them, you, you continue to use it for the next 10 years, that's your 20 years. Or if you had 12 different people who owned it in that 20 years, you could add them all up, as long as everyone is still making the same use of the property, you're entitled to go back to, basically, to when this adverse use began, and that goes towards your total. So we have actually, as I say, we're looking at, I believe, that's 1971. I don't, I'm not sure when that building was built, but that is 42 years ago. Again, we are more than double what's required. And, you know, the only people who presumably would have been available to object would have been, you know, the, the successors, you know, or the stockholders of the Worcester Carpet Company, as I say, that closed up in 1902. So, you know, our position remains that we actually have title to that property through adverse possession. And the case law supports us, it supports us in terms of tracking, and supports us in terms of not having to have it, you know, stamped by the court. All the court, basically, that's, basically, that would-
What's preventing you from getting us, to get us a stamped, like, record of title and with this in it?
Well, what, the, the argument, I mean, basically, the story is, we own it already, all we would be doing would be confirming our title. Doesn't mean we don't own it. Does not mean we don't own it, we own it. That confirms our title. But it doesn't mean that we, you know, it means that we own it.
So why can't you present to this board a record of, written record that, I mean, that includes that piece for us?
Well, because this, this came up, came up for the first time three weeks ago, or four weeks ago, the first time that we had knowledge of this, and, and you don't, you know, if you were gonna go through that process, it takes more than four weeks.
Well-
However, I would say-
You told me you own it, and now if, what, what process would it be just to go get it, register your deeds and ensure it's there?
But I'm just saying, if, if, if we own it, and your counsel agrees, I think that this board, in all fairness, we have presented to you ample evidence that this, of this building being used, of all the various approvals that we've gotten from the town approvals, in terms of the building permit, in terms of the variances that have been issued, in terms of the special permits that have been issued, all of them utilizing this parking in front of the building. And now, here we are, 42 years later, and this is suddenly an issue in terms of, you don't own that land, even though we've been giving approvals for the last 40 years as if you own that land. And now suddenly, we're gonna decide that we're not gonna recognize your ownership until you go back to court and get a judgment, even though it's not required under the law. And you have plenty of evidence in front of you, just go back and look at your own approvals and your own plans, and you will see that this property has been used.
But I have your submission to the board.
Well, this, that is based-
This is by your stamp surveyor who shows-
You also, you also-
You don't own it, only it's owner unknown. So, I mean, this only came up because you presented this to us. It didn't come up before, you know, in those previous decisions.
Yes, it did. I'm sorry, it did. If you look back at the 2001 plan, it's, it's the same plan, it's, it clearly says owner unknown. I have the plan with me, I can be happy to give it to you. I do have it here.
Again, my, I guess my question is, why can't we get something in writing from this, from the, registry of deeds with your deed containing that property? Wait, okay, you, you tell me it requires a superior court action? Okay, so that, I think that's what I was trying to say. You say you own it, you, there was no problem, so what, why does a court have to declare it? I want to bring that to you. You said the court doesn't have to reaffirm, so now why does a court have to declare it?
To satisfy you what you're looking for, something on paper.
Yes.
You would have to go to court. But again, if I understand all the circumstances, by operation of law, without anything else being done, they do own that parcel of land, because of the continuous use and all that. Can I ask a question?
Sure, please.
See, I haven't seen the chain of title.
Yes.
I assume that in each title, that parcel is presented as part of the larger, this little swath that we're talking about?
I, well, what, the title that-
It's a separate.
The title that we have, if, if you look at what I've got, starting in 1946, if you look at the, the plotting of our property, the course runs by Oxford Street, and then it runs by Landauer formerly of the Worcester Carpet Company. And that's consistent from 1946 forward.
It's the latest deed there.
Copperbaum?
What, the latest?
There's, basically, the description has remained unchanged from 1946.
So in each description, though, it has that part separate from the parcel, correct? Has never been joined?
It, it, it does. We could have, you can have more than one parcels, a budding parcels, you don't have to combine them. We have, our source of title for the piece that you have, we have record title to that, it comes from a different source. I don't believe that came from the Worcester Carpet Company. That comes from a different chain of title. So it's like only two house lots side by side.
But all the references to that, to the Worcester Carpet Company there? But all the references to that, to the Worcester Carpet Company there, they're all separate parcel, not, not included in your boundaries?
I wouldn't expect that they would be, because they're a separate parcel. And, and you have one parcel which you've acquired through the chain of title, the deeds that we have, and you have a separate parcel, which happens to be directly next to that parcel, which abuts it, which we've used, and our predecessors have used for 42 years, and that is a separate parcel. It doesn't mean that we don't own it. It doesn't mean that it has to be combined with this parcel somehow included in our deed. It means, again, if you bought a piece of property from John Smith, and you bought a piece of property from John Doe who lived next door, you have two pieces of property. They're side by side.
Understood.
They're different titles.
Understood, but you'd have a conveyance to you if you bought it. You didn't purchase this property yet. You didn't, you don't own it yet on a piece of property.
You nev-, you never do, in an adverse possession case like this, you don't get that. But what you get is the continued use, the fact that it's been paved, the fact that cars have been packed, you know, parking on it day in, day out, the fact that they plow it, that they maintain it. And if you look at your records and your approvals and the building permits that have been issued, and all the various approvals that have been issued by this board, including the one that's shown on that plan that I have you from 2001, when the last special permit was issued, where it clearly says, it's the same note on the plan, none of that has changed. This parking is the same as it's always been. It's never been an issue before, never been a problem before, and we've been using the parking for 42 years. There's absolutely no reason in the world that any of that would change, and if anyone were to come forward and to say, you know, I'm objecting to your use of that property, we have title to it. They couldn't object. And I think, you know, you've got, you've received some, basically, you're saying, well, we'll just go back to, to court and confirm it, and two years from now, come back to us, and then we'll give you a special permit.
I'm just, is it because of the case of all of that you have to prove it, or it's just that you can't go to court in two years?
I'm sorry. You, you don't have to prove it to have title to it. I can give you the cases for it. Your lawyer has agreed with me on that. It's the law. You may not agree with it, but that's the law.
I like to say, he's not, he's not our attorney.
Okay, all right. Well, we, we have other lawyers here, we can ask them as well.
I know, but...
I have the case, okay.
Come in saying he's our lawyer.
I have, I have the case law here. This is not, you know, again, I went to law school. I'm a lawyer. I've been a lawyer for 35 years, okay? There's no question about this. I can give you the cases. I offered to give them to you last time. There is no question whatsoever about this. It's settled law that adverse possession gives you title. You don't have record title, but it gives you title. So to keep saying we don't own it, and we have to have a judgment from the court to own it, it's just, I'm sorry, it's, it's just incorrect. It's not true.
Okay. It may be something we want to fire.
Would you like, would you like to give me, would you like to see the cases from the court that verify that?
I've seen, I've seen cases for, I know, I'm familiar with adverse possession. I mean, and...
You've seen cases that say that you have no title until you go to court?
No, I've just seen, I've...
Okay, because I, I can give them, I have, I made, I made multiple copies, I'd be happy to give them to you.
If you'd like to provide them, sure, we'd take a look at it, but...
Yeah. And I assure you, they, they say what I'm saying, they say. And you could look at them for probably five minutes, and you would see clearly in the heading, it'll, it'll say in the heading that you, you know, you have title without having a record title. There's no mystery about this. It's the law.
You can provide those if you can. Sure.
Just to make the point, this, this, as, as you may recall, this premises here are located on what was formerly a business use, and has actually had a business use since its construction. As I mentioned in my brief, there have been several companies involved in this particular portion that we're interested in. We have the Glass Retail Sale Company, which was, I believe, the, the owner of the, who initially constructed the building, Medical Supply Company, Telecommunications Supplies, and most recently a carryout catering business, and then our proposed use. All of these uses have been continuous, the use of the parking has been continuous. Your provisions under your Section 8 adopt Section 7 of Chapter 48, as far as non-conforming uses are concerned. The town in its wisdom had seen to change the zoning in this area to a residential zone. However, that does not change the non-conforming use that had existed prior to that. With respect to just the parking component, the definition of this usage, which had actually been implemented in the building under 3.0, I'm sorry, 6.3.2F, retail store general and personal service, is somewhat similar to your definition in 3.2.5.0, retail store and sales, describes everything that has been in this premises before. So, we are asking that, that you affirm a continuing non-conforming use that had already been there. Irrespective of how you may feel about the triangle, there was use of parking on that premises that was deemed sufficient, and, and that use had been continuous since this construction of this building. And I, I point out on Section 8.4, non-conforming parking, this bylaw shall not be deemed to prohibit the continued use of any land or structure that is non-conforming with respect to the parking requirements. So I respectfully submit that, that these premises are a legal non-conforming use, and the prospective use of is a legal non-conforming continuation. Respectfully request that you approve our motion. Thank you.
I think maybe we need just an opinion from, from town council on this.
Sounds good.
And we can go with whatever, you know, our town council opinion. So we can present the, the case law for, with him. I'm sure he'd probably be familiar with most of this, but I think that's probably the most prudent thing to do. And if he says, well, they have title, and that's fine, and he's the town council, and that's, that's fine with him, that would be fine with this board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
May I make one comment?
Sure, one up to the podium. Sure, it's still, it's still an open meeting?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you again, I'm Ken Ethia. I think what these gentlemen were talking about was, was the carpet company, I think, was owned by William Hogg, am I correct?
Uh, it was someone, I think, by William Hogg.
Yes. Okay, I, I actually am doing what the Parks Rangers are walking tour. I've done several, I'm going to do one this summer. So I've done a little bit more research lately on that area. Mr. Hogg actually did, did his carpet manufacturing at the building that was at the end of what is Main Street today. The foundation is still there, you can clearly see where it was. I've given you a picture of the building that burned down during World War II. But even after it burned, they, there were still other buildings there, there was a blacksmith shop, a tape factory, there were five buildings. But anyways, there was a business there after Mr. Hogg. It was a fellow named William Shop, had a shoddy factory there. He's no longer alive, but I know he has a daughter that's still in town. And they probably were in there, I think probably until around 1960. And when we were talking about heirs of the, the land and all this, I, I just wanted to make you aware that that was not the end of the manufacturing there, and, and it was used much more recently. I don't know if it matters or not, but I just wanted to let you know about that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Now, did you want to make a comment again?
Hi, my name is Jay Zideman, Mr. Kader's daughter. I just had a really quick question for, I'm sorry, I don't know your, your name, sir. When my dad was saying that he previously owned even your property, not necessarily just that triangle, and you were very quick to shut him down when he said, when we said it, they passed title just between Mr. Blaze and Mr. Burkett, and you said on paper, doesn't exist. How come now, with that adverse possession and that triangle, you don't have to have something on paper?
Well, that's the adverse possession part of it there.
Right.
They're not claiming that they owned it, they're just claiming that no one owned it, and they've used it for so many years.
Right, but now they're saying, well, we don't have to go to court and get it...
Well, we're just going to get our own legal opinion from our town council on that. That's where we're going to be. If the town council says, you know, they're correct, then we can work on an assumption.
I just had a question because it was just like, nope, no paper, nope. So that was just, I just had a question about it.
Oh, I think you've, I, I think you've, we've pretty much understand what your, your, your argument for that.
In that context, you're talking about record powers.
Yeah, no, you...
He had said that, and I looked, and I didn't see his name.
Mm-hmm.
And then he said it again. So, you know, maybe he, I don't know what his interest in that property was, but he, you know...
But it wasn't on town.
I don't think he was playing the game of possession, it wasn't because he had...
Mm-hmm.
Just looking at the, the chain of deeds, the name didn't appear.
Okay. Okay. So, on this, because we, is there any motions from the board on this? Do you want to continue this till we at least hear from town council on that? He makes a decision, if that's what, that's what he gets paid to do, advise us on that, and we can go from there. Any comments?
Was there a motion made or no?
No, I'm looking for, I can't make the motion, so I'm looking for someone to...
And I'll second it.
Okay, well, all in favor of getting, of continuing this so we can get some advice from town council on that part of the land?
Aye.
Aye.
Favor. We're going to continue this till we get advice from town council on his opinion on, on your adverse possession ownership, okay?
May I just ask, so no further public hearing is required, you just have your opinion and ready to decision?
No, well, it's, we're continuing, we haven't closed the hearing.
We didn't close it.
We're not closing the hearing. We're going to continue this one.
May 16th will be the next day.
May 16th. Now, I just needed how, how it affects the second hearing on this one.
It would affect the, the second hearing, because right now, depending on how the outcome, it's the difference of a special permit for five fewer parking spaces they were requesting or not. And, and not to, to jump the gun on it, previously in a memo regarding the parking space requirements, there was a question as to whether or not the, the parking count was correct. I did go back at your request, the, the new parking ordinances went in on May 13th of 1999, and the petition for Al's Barbershop went in on May 25th of 1999, so they were subject to the new parking requirement, so it adds an additional three spaces for the requirement. So instead of 17, they're required to have 20 spaces for the uses on that lot.
20 or 22, do you remember?
22, was it?
I thought it was 22.
Well, we had, we had 17 total, and then with, with the added amount for the new ordinances, it would be three per, one for each employee on the larger shift, which is three, so it would add three to the total, so it would come to 20.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that one, we're going to continue, again, we had that motion, we're all in favor, so we're going to, what was the date on that one?
May 16th.
May 16th? And Mr. Kader and everyone who's any of butters here, you're not going to be notified, so just make, make note of that date. Okay, so now what we're going to do, we're going to have to open the next hearing, which is on the parking part of this, because you filed this separately on this one. We might have to continue that one, but we'll do that at, when we open it here. So we're going to open the 7:15 hearing, applicant Gabrielle Holdings LLC requesting a special permit under Section 6.2.3 of the Urban Zoning Bylaws for Relief from Parking Regulations set forth in Section 6.3 for the property located in 143 Oxford Street. And the applicant is here.
Motion open?
Motion open?
I'll make the motion open.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Oh, well, good evening.
Everything, yeah.
Donald O'Neil, I represent Gabrielle Holdings, the owner of the property. We did, after our last hearing, this issue came up. You know, the idea in terms of seeking the second special permit was to address the concern that you had about parking. And I feel basically on the, first off, I should say that we have, I did apply for, based on 20 spaces, we have 12, I guess, that are not including the five in front. So I asked for a relief of eight. We have, since that point, the, the nine spaces that were determined to be needed for the convenience store was based on the gross square footage of the convenience store, which I believe is like 1,384 or thereabouts. That was because the building inspector didn't have basically the, we hadn't provided him with the layout of the store, and, and looking into making the determination, it's one space for, one parking space for about 180 feet, basically of, you know, floor space in the store. So you're allowed to subtract out from that number your coolers, your shelving, you know, your storage, all of those areas that are not available for people to stand on, I mean, it's part of your, your display areas, all of those items would be taken out. And that's, that's done routinely, that's just the normal way that these things are calculated. And because we hadn't given him, you know, a layout of the property, he was just going basically worst-case scenario, it's the whole thing. And, and at the moment, that's all we had, so we came up with the nine spaces. We have, since that point, and discussions with our prospective tenant, come up with a floor plan for the property, which would reduce the actual floor space down to right around 800 square feet from the 1,300 plus. And I think that if you do the math, that comes up to...
Still at 20.
About four and a half, which would be considered five, and then I believe one for the employee, so that becomes a total of six. Six as opposed to nine. So based upon, you know, that square footage, we would be able to reduce actually our request for relief from, from the eight, to subtract three, down to five. So what...
You say you had 800 square feet?
Correct.
And what's the, is it one per...
180, one space for every 180 square feet, which works out 4.4, which I believe you round up to five.
Okay.
And then you have one for employee would be six. Before, it had been calculated on the basis of nine. So we're able to retake, by, by excluding the freezers, you know, the shelving, the storage areas, all of these spaces which are not open, you know, basically open to the public, we're reducing the number by three. And that's, that's the way it's always done. It's not, I mean, that's how you calculate these things. So we were able to knock three spaces off. At the time, there was some, since we were here last time, we were trying to get this on, you know, to be heard contemporaneously with the other application. We, we got in what we had, which at that point was, was the, was the eight spaces, and I'm just telling you from right now, we're able to reduce that, so we're only looking for five. We don't need the eight. So our request for relief is now reduced to five. You can, you can always go down, you just can't go up. So the relief that we feel that we need based upon our floor plan is actually five spaces. So that's where we're starting from, is the five spaces. And, you know, a couple of issues that we talk about, and I, you know, I'm of the opinion, basically, that if you were to decide this special permit... of the opinion basically that if you were to decide, um, this special permit, um, you know, based on what you've got, you would be giving us, uh, you know, relief for the parking spaces, and that's if you want to not to count the five spaces that we have in front. Um, if you exclude those spaces, um, then the issue, and grant a special permit which reduces our parking requirement, uh, you know, down to, uh, from 20, down to 17.
Well, I, I think you needed 22. I have 22 in my notes, so I just wanted to make sure.
From, uh, yeah, we've had 20, 20 is what they said last time, and, and I'd wanna clarify that like right now, because.
Sure, I mean, you had, you had nine for the, uh, last time you had nine or 10, I don't know, we rounded it down.
No, I don't, I think it was nine.
Yeah, I was gonna say, if we, if, if we go through, there's, there's six required for the apartments.
Six for the barber shop?
No, five for the barber shop.
Uh, it's.
It's two for the net area and three for the employees. So, five for the barber shop, six for the apartments, and nine for the convenience store.
Okay.
That's 20.
20.
20.
And that's applying the more restrictive barber shop, uh, requirement, which, which, which the previous barber missed by a week, or whatever it was in terms of meeting the new deadline. That's what the increased number.
And if I may throw the chair, um, the, the owner of the property, um, came to see me yesterday with a revised sketch plan for the layout of the convenience store, there, there's nothing that has been officially submitted yet, so I haven't been able to revise my parking numbers if they would need to be revised. However, I did make the, the statement to, to the owner that, um, that if they are looking to do this because it is a net area, that any type of layout that is provided to me will be held to. It's not, we're gonna put something on a plan so we can reduce our parking and then build something different. If it's put on the plans to, to get a net floor area, that's what's gonna be built, or else there won't be a certificate of occupancy given.
Um, so, in, in terms of, um, what, what, one of the reasons why we feel that we would be entitled to a special permit, and I, and I don't, I don't wanna start on you again with in terms of the, the issue, just in terms of.
We know what issue it has to be.
But I think, I think that, that even if you have, despite, uh, all that's been said to you, um, you know, uh, you're not, you're not sure of that at this point. I mean, clearly, I believe that it's legitimate for the board to take into consideration the fact that these five spaces have been used by the owner of this property, or previous owners of property, for the last 42 years for parking. There's been no problem with it, there's been no issue over it, uh, and that's been going on for, as I say, for at least 42 years. Uh, so I think that that could be a factor in terms of the request, that the relief that we're asking for, uh, knowing basically that, uh, you know, w- we've been using those spaces, uh, and there's no reason in the world why we wouldn't continue to use them, even if you were, didn't feel that you wanted to officially recognize our ownership over that, although we had, we do have ownership. Um, you know, it's been 40 years. Uh, I think that that would be something, you know, that would be, could factor into your decisions in terms of, uh, looking at the parking that's available. I mean, we can all pretend these spaces don't exist, they've never existed, no one's used them for the last 42 years, they're not gonna be available for anyone to use going forward, and we're just gonna put blinders on and pretend that they don't exist, even though, knowing full well that they do exist, that they have been used, and they're gonna continue to be used. Uh, but, so that's, you know, that's, that's one of the factors, I think, that would be within your purview to look at. Another factor, I think, that we wanna look at, and we've got some, some folks here tonight to talk to you about, is this is a mixed use. Basically, we've, we've got, you know, a variety of uses there. You've got some residential use, you've got the barber shop, and you've got what we're proposing to be now is, is the convenience store, although it has been used for retail purposes in the past. I mean, most recently for a catering and a takeout food business. Um, when you have that, when you go through the math, and you come up with the six spaces for the, uh, you know, for the residential, now we're, we're talking about five spaces for the barber and a, and six spaces for the convenience store, uh, you know, that's a total of 20. And, and the way that the regulations are written, basically, they assume that all of those uses, you know, are gonna be, uh, called upon, are gonna be in, in use, you know, simultaneously at the same time. Uh, and what, what I think you, you would find in this type of situation is that, you know, when you have, when you have a mix, uh, there's kind of an ebb and flow that takes place. And, you know, the, uh, the barber shop's, uh, not open at night, uh, you know, it's not open Mondays, it's not open Sundays, uh, limited hours on Saturday, um, there's not somebody, you know, always there. By the same token, uh, you know, we have the apartments, um, the people go to work, people go out, uh, they're not always home, there's not always two cars for every apartment, you know, parked in the driveway at the same time. And conversely, for a convenience store, uh, you know, you don't have, uh, five customers or more, uh, in the store, you know, all the time. Um, so I think when you're looking at a use, you have to take into consideration that some of these spaces basically are gonna be available for a variety of uses. Sometimes they're gonna be used by the barber shop, sometimes they're gonna be used by the convenience store, sometimes they're gonna be used by the residential.
Okay.
Uh, we do have, um, uh, the barber, um, who's been in business there for some time, uh, he's here tonight, uh, we have some of the resident, residential tenants here tonight, uh, these are the people who live there, these are the people who deal with the parking. Seems to me that they would be the, uh, the, you know, the people who would have the most knowledge in terms of what the parking situation is like. Is parking a problem? You know, do the people who live there feel that it's a problem? Do the people who have a business there feel that it's a problem? Uh, you know, they're gonna have the, the, the most unbiased information, I think, and the most, you know, correct information concerning that. Incidentally, um, it's school vacation week. That's why there was, probably why there are so many people at the barber shop today. School vacation week. Uh, because it was pointed out that somebody went by and they counted the cars at 1 o'clock. Uh, but that's the explanation for that.
Okay.
But in any event, we do have them here, uh, I'd like to have them be, be given an opportunity to tell you basically what their experience has been, uh, with the parking, whether they've had a problem with parking, and, you know, at the same time, you knowing full well, um, that, you know, these other spaces are, are available for use and will be used. Um, and I think, um, you know, if you wanna hear from them, I mean, they've come, we've asked them to come, and they're prepared to, uh.
Well, I mean, if, if they like to give a comment, we, we certainly listen. Just, 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 I mean, the, the calculations are the calculations. We don't share parking spaces, okay? So, now it's like, you know, we're not gonna have one tenant in one part of the building and say, well, he's gonna use this 70 hours a day, and then we're gonna count that as another parking space for the later hours of the day. I mean, once you need X amount of parking spaces, 'cause it'd just be said, when we say, uh, you have three stools at the barber shop, I'm hoping that he's gonna have someone sitting in each stool. So, that actually, with, with three barbers, you have three people getting a haircut, we're giving him five, but that really is six. And if there's anybody sitting in a chair waiting to get a haircut, you might have eight to nine. And I think you've gotten, you've gotten your haircut there before, right? Um, so, I mean, the, the minimum parking spaces that we're giving you at five, let's say for that particular, uh, business, is really a bare minimum. Okay? And I know, and, and that's what these parking, uh, regulations are, pretty much is a bare minimum, where that, that one business has the potential to have to take nine to 10 spaces.
Do you, do you think that the parking space for the barber shop, they're used at night?
Uh, I don't know, I don't know.
Are they used on Saturday or, or Sunday when they're closed, or?
I don't know if, if, if the tenant, the six, that are for tenants, if they, if they don't work the weekends, they might wanna park their car there, and then Saturday the barber shop may be open. It's all hypothetical. What I'm saying is, we're giving you the minimum, and you're telling me, well, there might be someone there at night. What I'm telling you is there could also be, he can also have a busy barber shop there and, and people not having a place to park, but that's just.
Oh, sure, and I, and I think the barber would probably be a good judge of that. Um, but I also think that what, what, what you also have is a bylaw that gives you the discretion and the authority to, to make exceptions and, and to take into consideration special circumstances where you might decide, uh, you know, that, um, that, you know, to waive the strict compliance. And it should be, I would think, actually, um, when you take into the consideration the five spaces that we have that are available for use, uh, and would otherwise, and are gonna be used, then I think that, again, um, that is a factor which, that's the reason why you have this type of a provision in the bylaw, so that you can take that type of information into consideration. Now, certainly, the regulations are the regulations.
Yes.
Uh, and you do have to have spaces, uh, but I think if you have, let's just, let's just say you have a restaurant, um, and all you have is a restaurant. Um, and restaurants are open basically, you know, for certain hours, hours of the day. Um, maybe it's a restaurant that's only open for lunchtime. Okay, so, if you determine what the parking requirement is, you're gonna have all those people there at that time. Uh, I don't think you're gonna have, I, I, I know how you calculate the regulations, but you're not gonna, people do go to work during the day, not everyone has two cars, uh, barber shop is closed some days. Um, so, I think really, in fairness, that you should take into consideration, particularly in a mixed-use situation, that the parking requirements, uh, you know, some of these spaces, it's not like we have reserved parking, six spaces for the, for the convenience store, reserved parking, five for the barber shop, uh, and, and reserve, you know, and, and of that nature. Basically, it's, it's parking, uh, that's available, they will be shared, and, and it functions. I mean, this property has been used for many, many years, um, you know, without a problem. Uh, and I do think in terms of if, if parking is a problem, uh, and there's no parking for people, uh, then I think, you know, they don't go to the convenience store. Um, so I think it, it's sort of self-regulating in that sense.
Okay.
But we could have the tenants, they could tell you what their chances are.
At this point, if there's someone that wants to give us a comment, we'll let them, give them the opportunity. If there's someone that wants to comment on this, come on up and state your name.
I'm the barber Al, how you doing?
Hey.
Uh, I got no problem with the parking over there, and we've never had a problem in the past with, uh, any of the businesses next door. We've had a, like a, a trucking company over there, and they've had like 15, 16 trucks at their time, and we never really had any problems like that. And a lot of my business too over there is walk-ins, you know, from the neighborhood. That's why I went there, because it's such a tight neighborhood, and there's a lot of houses around. Sure, it's busy sometimes, but it's not like a Rob Roy or something like that, you know, it's a, it's just a, a small barber shop, but.
That's three stools, right?
What's that?
Three stools?
Yeah, I have three chairs, uh, three barbers in there, yeah. Uh, I'm there like most of the week, uh, they're there full-time, and, uh, like I said, we've, we've never ever had a problem with, uh, parking over there, uh, ever. Uh, that's just about it, I don't know what else to say, but, you know, like I said, some of it's walking, and a lot of it is the kids in the neighborhood walk to my shop, so, you know, sometimes there is lots of cars there, but not, not usually, you know, not too, too bad, but that's that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else, uh? Mr. Kader, you wanted to make one more comment?
My name is Paul Kader, 53 Old Common Road, Auburn, Mass. I bought this, I'm there next door, Dave, I bought this property in 1956. That used, the railway used to run right completely through that building, through my building, and I bought two pieces of parcel and landed here. Now, my main concern here is that there's a discrepancy. I own 150-foot frontage, and I had it surveyed four times, and with a railroad spike put down, and it goes in the middle of his driveway, and every time I turn around, the railroad spike is gone, it's gone. I'm so sick of having it surveyed, and that, the problem is, that's a one-way around the building of that house of, uh, my neighbors. The, the parking on the left-hand side is not marked properly, and for to go around the back of the building, he has to go on some unpaved land and come across, and come across my piece of property in the front part that I own 150-foot frontage. Now, I have the problem of adverse property with him, and I don't want, if you bring a big truck through there, there's a crosswalk that's right in front of the street, whenever in where the parking lot is, in the back belongs to me, the front part of it belongs to me, and the back part belongs to him, but he has to cross my property line. And if I let him keep using that all the time like that, then he can say that he owns the property. But once a year, I have to go out and put a sign up that no parking on this here and no trespassing. So, then he can't come to me and say that, well, this is my property, I've been using it for 20 years, you know? And that railroad used to go right through, and Mr. Blaze that I bought it from owned that railroad piece. Unfortunately, he died. But that piece there, we, back then, we shook hands, he says it's yours, Paul, and I bought it. And then I never transferred, I just transferred the piece of property that I wanted, and it was set in there, so I sold it to Mr. Burkott. But I really didn't own it, but we did what I say, and he gave me that piece of property with the one I bought. And now, I don't know how that you can go around that building and back down into the, without going over my property and somebody else's property, and I don't know why there can be a one-way street around that building, and if you do that, then you, uh, it's gonna cut down half of his pocket.
I suggest that, you know, if you have one of your surveys available to, you know, for.
No, I don't have.
Show the board or, you know.
I had, I had a railroad, there's three stakes there still left, but the one with the railroad, uh, strike I had, that's 150-foot frontage on my property, is all dug up again, and the railroad spike is gone.
Did you get a survey, an actual survey, you know, a stamp plan from anyone?
Excuse me, throw the chair? Um, I, I've had this conversation with Mr. Kader several times, um, I, I've walked the property with him, I, I saw the lines.
This, this is the deed.
Correct, this is, and, and I've seen this deed too. There, there is no actual stamp survey that, that shows to contest what the, the survey we have submitted in.
Okay.
Um, I, I've, I've gone back, I've tried to find, um, any type of plans that do show if there is a discrepancy. All the deed research, all the descriptions show that this, uh, the survey that was provided has the accurate meets and distances, the bounds. Um, I, I don't see where there is a discrepancy as far as the Kader property and the property in question. Um, we have the unknown triangle, which is a whole separate issue.
Right.
But as far as the two neighbors, I haven't found anything in any of our records that shows that there, there is a discrepancy as to where this line is being shown.
Okay, and so, at this point, we don't have a, he doesn't have a stamp plan?
No.
For that?
I looked in here quickly, but I don't.
Yeah, okay, I mean.
Wrong envelope here.
I don't think there's probably, your property line lineage on here is probably correct, it's just that I believe what you're saying is they're still just driving over your property.
Right.
Where it sits.
Right.
Okay. Duly noted, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I mean, at this point.
Continue.
It's still probably contingent on the same factor as hearing from town council as determining, uh, the ownership, if you do, because, as well as the bylaw, if you're gonna add those, they have to be on your property, okay? So, we're not, we can't, until we determine it's your property, those, those front spaces can't be counted. Okay, I know you're using them.
No, no, but that's why we're asking, that's why we're asking for the relief of five spaces. That's the point of the, of the petition.
Well, that would leave you with how many spaces left if you took those, those front five spaces?
Uh, we were at 20.
You were at 15 on the plan, right?
Uh, subtracted three, which is 17, uh, we have 12 spaces.
Well, the, the issue is you, you can't subtract the three spaces yet, I haven't seen an actual floor plan that, that shows me what the layout's going to be. Um, once that's submitted, I can revise my calculations to, to conform with our parking ordinance, but in, until I actually have a plan, I can't revise my, my parking calculations. Like I said, um, the property owner came up and showed that there was a sketch plan once. came up and showed that there was a sketch plan. Once that's finalized and provided to me, I, I have no problem going back and reviewing it, and if the parking calculations need to be adjusted, I can adjust them at that point. But, but at this time, without having an officially submitted plan that I can put in front of the board, I can't revise my parking calculations.
No, that, that's fair enough. All I would say, though, is that if, if you accept, and you're advised, after discussing with town council, that we actually do own that piece of property, we don't need the special permit. We meet the parking requirement. There will be no hearing necessary on our request for relief, because what's required, then, is seventeen spaces. We will have seventeen spaces.
Okay, so you're gonna, you're gonna provide us with a plan showing seventeen, right?
No, you have that. You have, we have a plan, the spaces, if you, we have, I think we have a plan which shows the seventeen that was presented to you last time we were here.
Correct. The, the plan that was provided on 31913, that one, that one shows seventeen.
That one shows seventeen.
Seventeen spaces, that includes the five. So if it is determined that those five spaces belong to that property, they would have seventeen on the site. If I am provided with a floor plan for the layout of the convenience store, that may provide a revision to the parking calculations. That may reduce it, may increase it. I haven't, like I said, there hasn't been an official plan submitted. Once that is, we, we can look at that, and it may...
Okay. So we can continue this to the same time, then? The next hearing on that day, I, I take it?
Yeah.
And if you don't need it, you can just withdraw your petition for this, and that would be fine. So is there a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue till maybe...
Sixteen.
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 Okay. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I don't think the times will be, well, it's seven o'clock and then seven fifteen on this one. Seven o'clock on the first one.
Can we put the two hearings together at this point, or if one may not?
We got two, we got two open hearings.
Okay.
We got two open hearings.
So seven, seven fifteen again?
Yeah.
Then we don't need the second one.
Right, so you just gotta withdraw. Thank you. Okay. So confused. No, we may, no, we'll probably give that to Hennigan. Anything else I can give to Hennigan? Do you hear him?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep.
Steakhouse? Okay. Can everybody see the?
Uh, no, can you maybe print it over here? That's good. If most people in the audience might wanna see it, we'll ask, but it'll be over here. But let's, let's get this going here. Can I get the motion to open the, it'll be the seven thirty hearing, applicant Outback Steakhouse, requesting special permit under section 6.2 plus 9.6 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for proposed two twenty-seven-seat restaurant with eighty-seven parking spaces on a property located at 452 Southbridge Street, Auburn map forty, parcel forty-eight, and 107. And the applicant is here, and just give your, thank you. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And just give us your name for the record, please.
And for the record, my name is Jamie Butler. I'm director of site development for Blooming Brands Tampa, Florida. And we're here tonight to let you know that we'd like to build a new Outback Steakhouse restaurant at this location on Southbridge and take down the old building. And in order to do that, we're asking your consideration tonight of our request for a special permit. We have a situation here where we have a shared parking agreement of record with the La Quinta Hotel next door. And just to let you know, we as a restaurant company feel totally confident in this situation. The hotel, as our neighbor, is the perfect neighbor, as you can imagine. Many of our customers come from that hotel. As a matter of fact, a lot of those are gonna stay off your highways and walk right over to our restaurant. With me tonight is our consulting engineer, Imad Zerain. And Imad is gonna give you the actual numbers. He's much better at that than I am. I wanted to simply give you my consideration on behalf of my company that we're totally fine with this parking situation. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Imad Zerain from DeVries Zerain, a professional civil engineer. Basically, the, the new Outback Restaurant will be located in the La Quinta Plaza, right on, uh...
Southbridge Street.
Southbridge Street, I'm sorry. Just north of the Pike. Just a little brief description of the existing condition. As you know, the, the hotel has ninety-nine rooms, and there's a hundred and three parking spaces. So it's one space per room and for, for employees. And the rest of the parking spaces are for an existing restaurant that currently is, actually, has been vacant for quite some time. Also was occupied by, our record shows, TJ's Seafood. It has a hundred and seventy-two parking spaces, I mean, a hundred and seventy-two seats. And the parking for that was sixty-six, sixty-two striped parking spaces. So we're proposing to demolish the building and build a new Outback Steakhouse. And we have some elevation, and I think we provided the board with small plans that shows the elevation. And also, we're proposing to repave the parking in that area and re-stripe it with a little more efficient re-stripping, which in essence will create eighty-seven parking spaces in the same exact footprint of the, of the paved area. Just a little more efficient circulation and whatnot. If we use the same ratio that was used for the TJ's Seafood for seats versus parking, and apply that to the two-hundred-and-twenty-seven seats restaurant we're proposing, we'll come up with eighty-two parking spaces. We're actually proposing eighty-seven parking spaces. And as far as everything else on site, you know, circulation, curb cuts off Southbridge Street, utilities, drainage, everything pretty much is maintained the same. With that, you know, we'll open up for any questions you may have.
Any questions from the board?
No, not this one.
So you're gonna increase it by, by, just by re-stripping by twenty-five?
Exactly, yes. Just, just more efficient parking the perimeter. You know, the, the existing striping, it's totally inefficient the way they have it striped. Just to add, the, the spaces that we, I mean, the seats, we have two-hundred-and-twenty-seven seats, nine, ninety-nine of them are indoor, and there's twenty-eight seasonal spaces for outdoor patio ceilings, only for summer.
Are there any butters for this hearing? Okay. Any comments from the board? And Nick, you've looked over the parking plan?
Yes. I have no, no objections.
No objections? He's actually increasing the parking?
Yes.
Yeah?
I, I looked at, I think that the, this plan, the way that they're designing it, helps the site function much better than what currently exists there. Plus, it'll be a big improvement from the building that's existing now.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to close the hearing? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're catching up. Okay. Motion to open the seven forty-five, applicant Herb Chambers, Prospect Street LLC, requesting a special permit under section 4.3 and 5.1 for the use of automotive sales, service, and repair shop in the Zone Three, Aquifer District, and to allow work within ten feet of the groundwater and a variance for retaining wall location as allowed in Auburn zoning bylaws, the use of the property as the auto service center and inventory lot, placement of a retaining wall when the setback area of the parcel, excavation to within ten feet of the historic groundwater table. The property is located at 20 Prospect Street, Auburn, map sixty, parcel eight. And the applicant is, a motion to open that?
Make a motion to open.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Applicant is here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board members. For the record, Lawrence Broder, representing Herb Chambers Prospect Street LLC. And you know Mike Andre from Graves Engineering. He's been here before in other projects, making presentations. The property, which is the subject of the, this application, is a six-point, six-and-a-quarter acre parcel located at the corner of Prospect Street and Route Twenty. I'm sure you're familiar where that is. The petitioner owns the property and is planning to utilize the property for an auto sales display lot and an auto service center. The property, as the chairman said, the chairman read it, the property is highway business zone, and the use for an auto sales and service at, in this location is permitted under the zoning bylaw. However, because the property is also located in Aquifer District Three, there is a special permit required under the provisions of section 4351. The site development work, as proposed, will be, require earthmoving and excavation to within ten feet of the historical high groundwater level on the site. In the Aquifer Protection bylaw, same section, states that a special permit has to be acquired in order to be able to do that. The third permit is a variance, and the variance relates to a wall. It's a retaining wall. It's located within the front yard setback. The reason we're seeking a variance is because that wall is in excess of four feet high, it is considered to be a structure under the state's building code. Because it's a structure, it requires a variance in the setback. But it is not a structure which houses anything, or is part of a building or the like. It is simply a retaining wall. And Mike Andre will explain what that generally looks like in his presentation. And I, I should stop here and let him run through the plan so he can show you what is proposed before we discuss things further. I think that might be helpful. So Mike, if you wanna present?
Thank you again. My name is Mike Andre, Graves Engineering. I'll keep this brief. I understand we're running a little bit long tonight, but the site is entirely wooded right now. It slopes moderately to severely from the south to the north towards Route Twenty. Has an elevation drop of about fifty feet. So there was definitely some challenges in developing the site and how to construct it into a parking lot and then a service center in the second phase. So we've developed the site plan to accomplish the client's goals, and also to, as much as we can, minimize the cuts and fills and try and balance them on the site. Still is a site where we have some excess cuts. But in order to accomplish the site plan, we've created three tiers. The first is the lower-level on Route Twenty, and there's a middle tier, and then a third tier. Those three tiers are separated either by retaining walls or slopes. The plan you're looking at here is the first phase, which would be the parking lot, creating about four-hundred-and-eighty spaces. The second phase would take, would take a service center building and basically drop it right in the middle on that middle tier, with very little changes to the rest of the site layout, other than reorganizing some parking and handicap spaces and whatnot. The site is accessed, will be accessed by two locations, primarily here on Route Twenty, located almost on the westernmost part of the property, in order to separate it as far as possible from the signalized intersection at Prospect. There's also a second entrance on Prospect Street as well. The site will be serviced by municipal water and sewer. There is also an extensive, extensive drainage and stormwater detention system. The site now has zero impervious. We will be creating approximately three acres impervious, or about fifty percent of the site. So there will be two large... There'll be two large underground detention systems. In the first phase, those will collect and attenuate the stormwater runoff from the site and discharge the site runoff to the northwestern corner, to an intermittent stream where it crosses Route Twenty. The second phase, when the building is in, will be adding a infiltration system to ride groundwater recharge of the roof runoff. That overflows into the, the other additional, the other underground systems as well. There any questions on the site plan at this point?
No, you had a peer review being done for this?
I'm sorry?
You had, you're having a peer review being done for this, right?
Correct. We haven't received comments to, as of this meeting. I understand, I guess the peer review is still on the way.
Anyone have any comments or questions? Continue then? We'll go with this?
I'm sorry?
I said we can continue. I'll say there's got more, you know, to give along here, but retaining wall?
Yes.
Okay, that, the one in question is just in, in the front setback?
The retaining wall that we're asking the variance for is located here?
Yep.
It's a terrace retaining wall. It's two separate walls. Both are within the front yard setback, which you probably can't make out on this plan, but...
Change your line here.
How far in the front setback? What, how close is it to the road there?
Fifteen feet.
At its closest, fifteen feet. Yeah, the, the walls, as I mentioned, they'll be terraced. So instead of one fourteen-foot wall, you have two shorter walls. To soften the expanse of even those shorter walls, there'll be landscaped in front with shrubs between with additional plantings and a top as well.
Limited to that corner. There's a substantial break there.
Yeah.
So it has to be, that's how you take care of that, that area. And we've got a, as Mike said, it's gonna be landscaped and it's terrace. I don't know. The space between the two walls has landscaped as well, so there's space on that. So it offers the space on that second wall as, as part of that whole retain, retaining wall system. You know, it really is, it's a, the location of this really is related entirely to the, to the topography of the property, which is one of those elements under the statute that qualifies you to ask for and, and for the board if it, if it decides to do so to grant a variance. The, if I can skip to the other two special, to the two special permits, the use is consistent with the other uses in the area. This is gonna be part of the Toyota dealership. And initially, it's gonna be storage for vehicles. And the second phase is building the new, which Mike showed you already on this plan, which would be the new service center. I can't, we can't give you a timetable for that. That's, we haven't been, we don't know what the timetable is. But it's, the, the site work is designed, and I think Mike already mentioned this, to provide an area right in here where that building can be placed and that parking gets eliminated. And the service center would be the same service center... And the service center would be the same service center, only larger than they have in the current dealership. Same processes. It's not, it's not a body shop. It's service related to the auto dealership. And then the, so initially, there's going to be a lot of motor vehicles and then you'll have a service center in fewer, in fewer motor vehicles. The work within the 10 feet of groundwater is, I guess, is pretty obvious. When you do the cuts and fills, you're going to be working in an area that gets you down to that 10-foot area. But you're reconstructing everything that's going to be underground there when you install what Mike described as the detention systems. You're going to replace, you're going to be able to bring the water into those detention areas through the catch basins and the drainage system, then discharge them at a much slower rate at the base of the site. And that, we understand based on the drainage calculations that the, that the flow of water overland now is going to be attenuated. It's going to be captured, fed out at a more reasonable rate. And the water which gets out to the edges of the property will be significantly less post-development than pre-development. Those are, you know, a substantial but brief description of what we're looking at for the special permits.
And you're also applying, I guess, we all under 4.3, 5.1, the storage there?
For?
Storage? Are you storing anything for, in the service center as far as anything oil?
Well, we're not building the service center now. If we have, we would have to come back if that were the case. I can tell you what will be stored there is exactly what's stored in the exact same amounts as, as in the present Toyota dealership. Utilizing the same science with, they've got a containment area, you know, berms in an area inside the service center where they store the oils and the other, other fluids that they have that contains anything that might spill.
So you have to come back for that when you're proposing this, to put the service center in?
Yeah. If need be, yes, we would. If, actually Dennis, I think the right, the proper answer to that is, is the storage of that is part of the service center. The storage of those fluids would be part of the service center use.
So you, you want that in?
Well, it's in, it's in.
Did you see it in here?
It's within, I'm sorry?
Within the, if you're going to store chemicals that don't, on the, even in the Zone 3 there?
Yep.
You still need a special permit, correct? Didn't know if you were applying for that. You didn't say it on the application.
Yes, whatever we have for the existing facility, we would have to, if we need more, we'll have to come back.
Say for the existing facility?
I'm sorry?
On this lot?
Yep.
I didn't, there's a facility already on this lot?
No. The facility that's next door that I said this is going to be part of.
Oh, next door, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? When will the review be done for the calculations? Do they give you a time?
Despite many phone calls trying to find out, we haven't been told.
Do you, do you know when you're on the agenda for the, are you on agenda for the planning board?
Yes, we're on the agenda for the planning board on May 14th.
So assuming it would probably be done before that meeting.
As long as there's no conditions that are, we don't know if there's going to be any conditions on it as far as the calculations here.
You can, if you feel you want to make a decision on this tonight, you can make it contingent upon having a clean review sheet from our reviewer.
16th. Or you can wait till the 16th.
Well, I mean, we're just waiting for, just from a clear review. I think we can make the decision as long as it's, like you said, contingent on that.
We would have no problem following what Mike just, what Nick just said about a clean review sheet. We have to come to a resolution with the peer review engineer under all circumstances. So it's, nothing would be standard practice to do that.
Okay. Motion, do you want to take this down? Okay. Got a hardship here to the land of the topography. Kind of everything laid out in the brief, clearly what is being done. Okay?
I'll make a motion to accept contingent upon a clean review.
Okay? Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Okay. Okay. 8 o'clock, applicant Archery and Arms LLC requesting a variance under section 3.2.5.0 and 3.2.7.4 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the use of an existing structure to design and assemble bows, arrows, crossbows, and retail and wholesale sales of, of the same in firearms and ammunition on the property located at 2-4 Elm Street, Auburn, MAF 57, parcel 14. And the applicant is here.
We are.
Okay, motion open to hearing?
Motion open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, my name is Paul O'Brien. I'm a lawyer. The practice is here in Auburn. With me is James Rathra, who is the member of Archery's, Archery and Arms LLC. Before we get started, I'd like to just give a couple of things up to the podium so that you can pass them around, some photographs of the operation, these parts of it. And I have a, a brief, you've got the brief, and I had a couple of things that I wanted to add to it. So instead of a different document, I'm going to give you what you've already read and redlined or underlined anything that's new. So it's going to be very easy for you to pick up and it's not much. It's just a couple of points that I wanted to make. Okay? Please do.
Want to proceed?
Sure. We're here because my client rented premises from a landlord, Mr. Murray. And both Mr. Murray and Mr. Rathra believe that the use that we, that Mr. Rathra is engaged in was allowed in that area. Turned out it wasn't. And so as soon as Mr. Rathra became aware of that, I got a call and we went and filed for this variance. Mr. Rathra's operation is, as said in the brief, we sell, he sells at retail. He also sells at wholesale. About 20% of his sales are wholesale sales. He also fabricates bows. There's, in one of those pictures, there's a funky yellowish-orangey contraption. Yeah, that. That's a bow press. He makes them, he uses them, and with those, he can fix bows, he can manufacture bows, and he does that. I can't tell you that he does all of the fabrication. That is not correct. But it is a significant part of his operation, as is the wholesale. 20% of his sales. So I just want you to have the right mindset in terms of what he's actually doing in this particular space. In the brief, I've mentioned that, you know, the unit's small. It's only 1,400 square feet. Of that, somewhere around 40% to maybe 45% of it is the shop. The rest is a retail floor space. So what we're doing here is we're trying to legitimize what's called, it's basically a hybrid use. There's some aspects of general industry, things that are allowed in general industry, and some aspects that are not. The prior tenant actually had a similar operation in some regards in that it was a wholesale operation, but it did have a floor, a display floor, and they did make sales from time to time to consumers as opposed to jobbers and the like. And in any event, this, this unit, if you look along the Washington Street corridor, the industrial uses are substantially bigger than 1,400 square feet. You know, it's pretty hard to get an industrial use that can exist in a 1,400-foot space. This unit has been vacant until Mr. Rathra rented it for about, just under a year. And we all know what happens when property's empty. First of all, the tax levy goes down because, or the tax bill goes down because it's not being used. That hurts the town. There are no people to work there. There's no jobs. The landlord doesn't, isn't able to keep his building as well as he might because he's not getting enough rental income. And we see that connected with the size, which limits, very much limits its capacity for industrial use, is the hardship. Moving on, the, my suggestion would be that this use won't be a detriment because, first of all, we know external ignition, that's different. The building's not going to change. It's a, not a high-volume type of retail operation. It's not like a convenience store. It's not like a retail department store. You're not going to see people crowding in and overwhelming Elm Street or this building in order to come into this shop. It's pretty much, it's a very limited, obviously, type of goods that are dealt in. And for that reason, I would expect that there will be no problem in terms of services from the town. It won't overburden the services from the town. And it's a quiet, quiet use. I'd suggest that the fact that it does involve, you know, involve general industry-type activities and sales minimizes the impact, so to speak, on the bylaw. We're not just outing, out and out dismantling that bylaw. It's a matter of trying to have a business that's partial fit, not a totally good fit, that could work. And so what we'd really ask for is, is that you consider this variance. I know that, for instance, you know, just going to jump back a little bit to hardship because always it's a difficult thing to do. But it is a hardship to both the petitioner and the, and the owner because if, if we're not able to do this, it would result in the petitioner not being allowed to use the unit. It becomes a wasting asset. And if allowed, the reuse of the unit would transform it into a productive use, which it wasn't for the last almost one year. So again, I would ask your indulgence. I would ask your, that you allow. I think that you've all dealt with the Washington Street corridor from time to time, and you probably also all know how difficult some of the properties there are. Down the street, there's a building with multiple uses, among them beauty, beauty shop, a gun shop, and that's in the GI zone. What we're suggesting is that we are similar to that. Further down, there's bookstore and several other businesses. We have a light vehicular, sales vehicles and service, which is not allowed in a GI, and it operates under variance. I don't presume an outcome here. I've said that in the brief and I'll say it again. I don't ever presume the outcome of this board until you take your vote. But I would sincerely ask you to give this every consideration, and I would ask you to consider approval of this variance. Are there any questions? I'd be glad to.
I have one question. Why, why the need for 2.7, 3.2.7.4? Because that's allowed by right in the GI district.
I'm sorry?
You, applying for 3.2.7.4, that's, that's an allowed use in the GI district. So he's allowed to be assembling? I'm assuming that's what it?
Well, he is allowed to be assembling.
Right. I didn't, I didn't know why you're applying for variance for that when it's allowed use.
Because there is a retail aspect to, to the business.
Yeah, that would be under 3.2.5.0, right? I'm just, I'm just confused on the, you got two sections for filing of the variance, one for retail and one for assembling, I'm assuming. The assembling is allowed by right in the GI district.
I think I took the wrong one out.
Okay. So what are we looking at?
Well, if you'd allow a motion, I'd add it. It's up to you.
Add, I'm, I'm just, no, what do you want to add? Which part?
The section.
No, you, no, I'm just questioning on the, on your application.
Well.
You, you're applying for variance under 3.2.7.4 as one of the sections. And I'm just, just letting you know that according to our bylaw, it's allowed, so you don't need a variance for that. So I, I don't know why it's.
So I think what I did was, I was going to, I had two actually in the beginning.
So this is not the, it's not the right?
Just hold on one sec.
3.2.7.4. Well, it has to, but that has to be related to the soil conditions, topography.
No, it doesn't.
Yes, it does.
No.
Oh, yes it does.
You have to have one of the above.
No. As, as, the first required finding is something wrong with the land.
I believe that.
I can cite it for you, but it's, and it's in every book and every piece of paper that they teach. And the first required finding is something wrong with the land, and that maybe you might be able to find it, but that's the first required finding. The hardship has to be related to that part of it. So second requirement has to be there. And all the requirements, unfortunately, are conjunctive, which means, as you know, you can't, if there's three requirements, it's not two out of three, it's three out of three. But you have to start with, first thing, what's wrong with the land.
Well, first of all, I really think that one does it because there are a lot of times when you have something wrong with a lot, and that does it.
A lot would be the parcel.
It's in the statute, I'm pretty sure.
I can read it for you, I mean, if you'd like.
Okay.
It starts with the conditions and then, that owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or such structure. Okay? But it relates to the conditions of the land. So if you can relate that to the, you know, anything, the conditions of the land, that's what's required. And everything that they've ever taught on every class, I mean, the first requirement of the variance is to say there's some, whatever's wrong with the land, and you relate that to whatever you need. As, just to give you an example, the last hearing we had with the retaining wall, that had to be, that had to be, no, it was related to topography. Okay? Which is in the statute. Okay? So anything related, it could be soil.
Topography includes structures. Look it up.
I do look it up, but I'm telling you, everything that's ever been printed about this, it's related to the land.
Existing structure is part of the topography. It is.
It's soil conditions?
Or?
Shape or topography.
Topography.
And it's topography of the land, it's not the topography of the land.
No. Dennis, just in the definition of topography, it includes structures. Topography, you know, we can change topography. You can change the grade of a lot. You can change all sorts of things, but topography is not limited to dirt.
Right. Topography, the topography part of the bylaw usually comes into play when, you know, as far as setbacks. It has nothing to do with a building. And I've researched this, and I'm sure our building inspector could look at this, but you have to start with the land on a variance. That begins, that's the first requirement in every variance we've ever had, and it's in statute.
Actually, I've had you allow variances based on structures, existing structures, and reuse of existing structures.
It could have been a structure related to soil conditions. It has to be related to the land. That's, that's as basic as it gets.
When looking at the site, though, because it is in the zone two aquifer, most industrial uses would be difficult to be put in that site because it is a zone two aquifer, and we'd be looking at probably providing a variance for that. And then, you know, if we're looking at it from that standpoint?
That's a good argument.
I don't know if we'd want to provide a variance for an industrial use that would be in that as opposed to a retail use, which would not affect the aquifer.
That's a good argument. But you can't make that.
No.
That's a good argument.
I actually made that argument in your, in the brief.
Where?
Item D. E. E? Let's see, one of them. D.
Well, that would be, should have been in item, first requirement.
I can bump it up to number, to B.
So what we require, I'm against, and I'm not going to coach you on this, but there would be something wrong with it that an industrial use couldn't go in there because of possibly an underlying aquifer condition, the soil conditions, correct?
Sure. Absolutely.
So I'll just put that part of you in your brief here. Because you were right, I mean, there's other businesses, and actually, all those other ones kind of related to problems with the soil. And hopefully, I mean, it just didn't show that in your brief here in the beginning, which is the first required.
Okay.
Okay.
And I appreciate your, your understanding.
Discussion. Yeah, I'm not telling you how to put the brief in here, but, okay.
I'll remember to put that in the right spot the next time.
Probably, yeah. Questions? Comments?
I think the use is fine.
What's that?
I think the use is fine.
So we find a hardship that because it's, he's in the aquifer district?
Yeah, absolutely.
And any other industrial use probably would have chemicals in it, so this is a better, which would be actually prohibited, so therefore, there's a hardship to the soil and conditions there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? You have a motion?
Got it.
You got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'll make review, so.
Okay. Minutes? Want to do the minutes? Anybody have a problem with the minutes there?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Ed.
We got a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion, any other business that we want to take care of? Motion to close the hearings?
I'll make a motion to close.
And motion to close that hearing too, by the way. All in favor of that one?
I, I, I.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. And a motion to close the meeting. Ready?
Make a motion to close.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Minutes? Want to do the minutes? Anybody have a problem with the minutes there?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, Ed.
We got a second, all in favor? Aye. Motion, any other business that we want to take care of? Motion to close the hearings?
I'll make a motion to close.
And motion to close that hearing too, by the way. All in favor of that one? Before we close?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. And a motion to close the meeting. Ready?
Make a motion to close.
Second? All in favor? Aye. Motion, any other business that we want to take care of? Motion to close the hearings?
I'll make a motion to close.
And motion to close that hearing too, by the way. All in favor of that one? Before we close?
Aye, aye, aye.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. And a motion to close the meeting. Ready?
Make a motion to close.
Second? All in favor? Aye.